I think there was a no trespassing wasn't there?
Okay, so you can't get in there at all.
All right. Tuesday, June twenty first, city council meeting. Call it order.
Jim Phillips. Jim Richards.
Right on that course.
Lori Novak.
Sandra Berger.
Very good. So. First thing on our agenda was a public hearing. The public hearing has been postponed. The landowner is reviewing some other options, so the gentleman that was interested in going and the he's voluntary approved or voluntary decree to sixty day extension. Find out exactly what the landlord has in mind. So we'll just see how it plays out, whether he comes back or the landlord decides to do something different, so. So there will be no public hearing. So the agenda is before us, I would like to make two changes. One is to remove section C ordinances and resolutions under department and committee reports. And the second item is to add a national night update, national night out update under personnel. Those are the changes that I have to add to the agenda. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, probably saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Public forum, it's a three minute time limit person. The city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments will cover the city business and most data privacy rules. No employees' names may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that comments be loaded in three minutes. Speakers will be recognized only once. This time, we ask that anyone who would like to address the city council up to the podium, state your name and address and fill out a form that's provided on the podium.
Well, that's happening, Mayor. I don't mean to interrupt, but you made the motion about approving the agenda as amended, but I didn't hear a second.
I will second that.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
My name is Shane Briggs. Address of. Excuse me, I'm not a resident of Orinoco. I'm here on behalf of Trudy and Neil Miller. Their address is eleven twenty Second Street Northwest, Orinoco. That's correct. Yes, eleven twenty First Street Northwest, Orinoco. And I am here to bring up the fact that we're expanding city sewer and water to the west side of the highway. And they're building a new home. So they would like to bring up the discussion of being it's a new home. They were told that the grinder station would not be included. They would like to bring that up for debate with the council. Um, to see if that could be something you guys could take care of. They weren't able to be here tonight, but they will be at the next meeting, so. That's.
What's your first name, Ken?
Shane, S H A N E. I'm not much of a public speaker, but.
So you're like contractor or?
Yes, I'm the contractor, so they weren't able to be in town tonight, so they asked me to step in for them and bring up the discussions, so.
So we've had, uh, there's been numerous communications with Trudy, the city council and Joel Paylor, city engineer, and Mr. Miller was here at our water and sewer meeting as well.
Okay.
For this monthly meeting come ten days ago, so.
Okay.
Um, well, the open, the public forum is meant to be a public forum as, you know, we're not expected to make, take action, but I think it's just to touch base on the discussion of the house and the timing of that house, which is kind of the basic challenger, not the challenge, but that's what we had in place and told us when we had to determine the number of sewer grinder stations to get funding, bonding bill funds for that. That was prior to, I believe, the Millers owning the house. It was considered to be an undeveloped arsenal. So at least, um, at that time, we put forth our number of units, identified the properties that were undeveloped. And so that's what we got bonding bill money for. It's unfortunate the timing of the Millers purchasing that land and the money being awarded to the city doesn't, you know, just to be blunt with you, that doesn't provide funding for that grinder station to be hooked in. We provide a water or sewer stub to within five feet of the property line. That's, we do that for all the properties. So.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions, Shane?
I know that, that shall do it. Thank you, man.
Anybody else like to speak for the public forum, second call? Third and final call. Seeing none, I'll close the public forum at six forty. All right. Sergeant Chambers isn't able to be with us, but the deputy that's here tonight, he's, uh, spoke with him briefly before the meeting. The only thing I had here is basically the speed radar speed signs that we have on Minnesota Avenue South as well as over several Hills Drive. And the Dane or Kane has been providing some of the data. And just for the council's information, so far I've seen that's still twenty nine thirty mile an hour average speed. Interesting factor from the, especially the Minnesota South measuring the vehicles, it's over a seven day period, it's around that seventy five hundred cars. South on Minnesota Avenue, so there's a lot coming from the McSumber area as well as residents on this side of town too, so. I haven't looked at the latest data just to see if that's trending down or if it's just holding or the percent driving over the speed limit, how that all measures out, so. I also explained about the camping, we're not allowing camping and, and he suggested that we send the county sheriff or the department a email explaining the, what's closed, what's open, so they're aware of it when they're looking at it, so we could. Campgrounds are closed all the time. And restrooms are closed all the time, they're locked up. And one of our discussion points tonight is to consider opening for large group rentals at the Oracle Park Shelter. We did have a little, we did have some vandalism on the men's restroom last Saturday. I went over to the park with the lions setting up their then on Saturday afternoon, and the men's restroom had been broken into. Screws had taken out the hinges and just walked in, so we don't know how long it's been open, but for some time, so. Hey, come up with a vertical hinge, you can't get to the screw heads, so they can't take that off anymore, so.
Was there anything inside then that was?
The towel dispenser was broken, glass cover over the plastic cover. It's only general as I could see, let's see, saw something else came, it was dirty, but I think it'd been open for some time, so. Get that in the books. Anybody have any other comments for? Chair? Appreciate, I mean, does she have something to share for us?
I'm glad you guys are seeing the success with the speed trailers. What you guys are seeing is what we see. We get reports of speed in areas and it sounds like the world's falling apart because oh, we get cars moving so fast, but we actually get a instrument out there that measures speed, we come up with the same data that the most part people are obeying, it's a few in between that they cause an issue, so. They serve a purpose, it's an expense, but it's a good visual reminder to your drivers going by that to slow down and follow the speed. I'm gonna, I do it my own personal vehicles, I'm driving by those things, it's a good checks and balance, so. It's a nice investment for the city, it'll pay off.
Does the sheriff have a, or sheriff department have a black counter that goes, that goes across the road to count cars?
So county highway does. So generally, they do all of our road studies. We don't get into the statistical data of that, but they do it for some of their funding for getting road construction projects through. So they're the closest contact I know of.
Is that possible for us to get that? Is it loanable or not?
So I've asked about setting it up for a certain area that was causing us some problems. We weren't able to come through for that. So they have it, but I'm not sure that it's theirs or if they rent it for the roadway. If it's owned by a united rental company and that they just bring it in for their projects, or if it's on hand, but I think one of the county highway road engineers would probably be able to answer that question.
We appreciate the use of your radar signs earlier this year.
Yeah.
Now we've purchased our own too, so.
Well, so, well, well, we still have more, so if there's an issue where you need them, put it in a spot that's portable, we can do that. And yours are probably fixed, I believe, right? To set them up and take them down, I mean, we can bring ours in pretty easy, so if you need it, let us know. So, and then also with your campground and stuff like that, when you guys are gonna make changes that have been a standard price for so long, it's good to let us know because we should find out at some point, but we're the ones that are out here that see what's normal and what's not. It's normal to see people in there at night, most summers, but, uh, now if it's closed off, we know it's not normal and we should stop and check it out, so.
We'll have city staff draft a letter, email and send it to Sergeant Chambers. Explain about the campgrounds and the restrooms.
Absolutely, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Planning and zoning, state of the committee. Speak to that.
Well. I was just gonna, I don't know who put it on the agenda, but I think it's, I think we should start discussing it. As, as a group, you know, is this committee something that we can count on? As a standing committee that is responsible for making recommendations, holding public hearings, et cetera. And I think we're in, we're in June and they've had one meeting so far with a quorum this year. So I think that's the topic.
I do, yeah, or is there a default process that can be followed if we don't get quorum? Or for something that needs to be heard.
It's, it's my understanding, because I mean, the, not this last one, the one before was supposed to be done and I was out here waiting to do it and didn't realize that it was canceled at the last minute. So it's not like it's always been that there hasn't been a quorum for that situation, but it's, it's been, this last one was, was one incident. Before that, every time you'd have it on your calendar, it was canceled because nothing was going on, so nobody talked about anything, so. When you say there was only one so far this year, which is true. There's a few other things that fit into it instead of just looking at there was only one so far this year.
Yeah, cuz that one I, I showed up to.
And we had no idea that it was canceled, you know, so we were ready to go over this material with what was going on, so we just can talk from our side of what there is, I don't know what the other people that were in, in that committee, we can just speak for us.
Yeah, it has been a light agenda, I agree. Two, a couple weeks ago, I did get an email from Paul that he had three candidates that have expressed an interest in joining the committee, so we'll see if that comes through in the July meeting.
I'm trying to think who, somebody resigned too in that last meeting that we.
Mark resigned or he retired.
Retired whatever that there was, so.
Yeah.
So how many people do we have on the committee and how many positions do we have open?
Three.
Two.
We have me, Jim, Wendy. Paul and Sorensen, I can't think of his name.
Mark resigned.
Yeah, Sorensen, that's his last.
Lance?
No, he's not on that list.
So he lives up in my center, I can't think of his name, Sorensen is his last name. So we have five. And that's why I.
The committee's five or seven? It is five.
No, it's seven.
Seven, you have two openings.
Yeah, we have two openings, I, I'm just saying right now, we have, we have five members. Yeah, yeah, so three would be quorum.
No, four. It's still.
Need four, yes, so.
No.
Well, you have conflicting information in the code book. In one section, it says the membership shall be seven, which could include two from council. In a later part, specific to planning and zoning headings, that's where it says membership is five members. And there's a cross reference, but I'm just saying, there is that conflicting language.
Yeah, so in, to determine what quorum is, then my view of it is it's seven, so you need four people. Yeah. But you could change the code to just have five members, that way you wouldn't have to fill which it seems to be hard to get membership, so that would be an option, but, but even there, I don't think they could even get you know, I don't know if there would have been a quorum for those two meetings that were canceled.
There's only one, well, there was, had two, I guess, you're right. For, cuz of what we missed, that we were here.
Yeah, but this issue, this issue was supposed to have two public hearings that were canceled, that's what the planner, the, that they hired said.
And it's happened in the past, this, this happened prior to twenty twenty two. There's been issues prior to this, since I've been on council, it's, it's, it's been an ongoing issue.
But I mean. It's an ongoing issue. I mean, just lately for this, it has been, but in the past, it has not. I mean, it does happen once in a while, but it's not like it happens a lot.
I just remember having people frustrated with the process, not them not being able to get be heard out at the, at the, at the P and Z meetings. I, I know it's happened in the past with the same property, actually. There was issues in the past too, I think there.
So is there a way of, regardless if we change the code and have five instead of seven, is there a way of having a process in place so that if the public hearing doesn't happen because there's a lack of quorum, that immediately it goes to council versus?
The statute, yeah, the statute that requires the municipal planning act, you know, it goes through who is the planning commission, there's a statute that talks about that, and it said it can be the council itself can be the planning commission, or it can be an appointed body, paraphrasing that. So I don't know if any other cities do it or not, be unique for sure, but you could say something like you know, the, you know, in the sections that require public hearings, like conditional use permits, the public hearing shall be held before the planning commission and then have language that says, or the city council.
But like for tonight, I mean, we, this got canceled because the property owner decided to cancel it, but that's what we did.
Right.
So when there was no language in the policy at that point.
The statute says that though, I mean, and then we were the impression that, well, look, this hundred and twenty days is gonna expire.
Right, that's what I'm worried about.
You can't get a quorum, we've tried twice, so we better have a public hearing where we can.
But does, does that? Is that right? I mean, to me, that feels like we're saying it's okay to do it this time for the city. But I don't know, it doesn't, that doesn't feel, that doesn't feel right.
They have to follow the rules, but we don't, we don't.
Let me ask you a question too, if that night didn't work out, that was there. Is there a way that we could communicate within the committee to say, okay, this night will work better and, and get it organized instead of just letting it go for another month? Okay, that, you know, and we don't have that communication to be able to do it, cuz I mean, it might have worked that if we could meet an hour or two or later, excuse me, that that might have worked, we don't know. Yeah, cuz I, I don't wanna let this slide by either, I, I wanna stick with what we need.
I wanna be clear, I don't think Phil or I don't wanna speak for him, but I don't think either one of us are saying it's okay. I think what we're saying is when you're faced with multiple bad options, having it before the council was the best bad option there was. So, yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not, yes, if you see your code says it's for the planning commission, that's where it should be, for sure.
Yeah, I guess, but then it hits the agenda tonight and for, for the property owner's sake, if we would have played it by the rules, then the property owner would have hit his hundred and twenty days of us not following through with our code and he could have done what he wanted with that property.
Well, it would have been rented, all, anything that he had applied for would have been.
So I feel like, I just don't feel like that's right. And I don't feel like it's appropriate for us to be sliding these public hearings in we, they can't slide something in and just make it happen. And then it also goes to the ethics of the committee, and this is not what happened, but let's say that we get people on the committee who have friends that are property owners and wanna change zoning. All of a sudden, they're like, well, I'm not gonna show up tonight, so there's no quorum, cuz I can tell how this is gonna go. It could long term be a, a bad situation.
Well, that problem is in a lot of cities, yeah, that small cities where everybody knows everybody and there's conflicts of interest, and you only have five members. You gotta have three people show up that don't have a conflict and that, that comes up, I mean.
And maybe that is part of the reason we have a seven person committee.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure we're following the rules and we're not sliding things in to our benefit and.
Well, here's what I would say to that, I mean, I, your code, some cities have a code that, that says that the planning commission actually makes the decision, it's not the council. They delegate the ultimate decision on whether to grant whatever they're applying for a condition use permit, rezoning to the commission. If your code said that, we wouldn't have done it this way. We would have just, you know, I don't know what we would have done, cuz there wouldn't have been a quorum, but I don't think, you know, in this case, the decision to move it to the council is just a public hearing. You know, ultimately, you know, the council's gonna make the decision anyway, and it is before the correct forum here, so.
But it's still not following the code, and it's a nice way of seeing it, but it's still not following the process. I, and it didn't happen, so we're, I mean, we're fine, but I think long term, what's the solution? Can we, can we, if, if a quorum isn't met in planning and zoning, for whatever reason, there's a public hearing that's on the calendar, can there be a commitment from planning and zoning that it schedules a public hearing in the next two weeks, you know, month, whatever it is.
And I think that's a good way to do it, okay, instead of going for thirty days, okay.
It should be in the following week.
Yeah, I, I think so, because I think the rest of us could get together, I just had no way to do that.
Especially, yeah, a special planning zoning meeting.
It occurred to me, why, I mean, the question occurred to me, why aren't you trying to hold a special meeting? And I didn't ask that question, but I think that's right.
I mean, you have a good point. You just have to give the ten day notice, so it wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to have it within ten days, but if you didn't, you could have it on day eleven.
Well, and then.
And getting it published in paper too, that's our challenge is.
And then the other thing that I want everyone to be aware of is when we're in this situation, we're that, that committee is responsible for holding those hearings because the people are planning things with their money tied up into land and waiting for us to get our, our act together.
Time is money.
And time is money, and it's unfair to that landowner to continue to make them wait and push things out, so I just, I just think it's really important for us as a whole to understand that process and to be respectful of them.
And I think this, you know, the discussion here, I think, is, is a good discussion. I think at the same time, uh, we should engage Paul, Jeanette, or Chairman to have him be part of this discussion rather than us kinda telling him what to do, cuz it's his responsibility to be the committee chairman and it's up to him to determine if he wants to have a special meeting, so I think we, I think we shared enough comments that we can move on, but I think we need to decide either I'm not sure who the right person is, but we need to have a discussion with Paul or I could speak to Paul, our personnel committee, and speak with Paul, cuz we wanna make sure he's fully understandable where the council's coming from and the concerns.
Could the two council representatives talk to Paul or have this up, have this on the agenda, to the next meeting?
Absolutely.
There's new people, they, cuz we're looking, we're looking for committee members, but we're also looking for committed committee members.
Right, right.
That's probably the most important.
Yeah, or, or is it even possible to have appoint stand in members from the council or members that have already been on the committee at one time to have them stand in, is that even an option legally?
Probably not, yeah, I, I think you need to pick.
I think we're just gonna do it that way.
Yeah, I think you get to pick two people. Cuz you, you run into the open meeting law there, because then it's like the same issue is discussed at multiple meetings, and then meeting one, it's the two of you, and then in meeting two, it's you're gone and it's you and a third council member. Is that a serial meeting between those three council members? It's just bad practice, I don't.
What if they're public meetings, why would that matter? They're posted public meetings, why would it matter?
Because there'd be three council members engaging in decision making. Even, you know, what, I don't know, I don't think it.
Posted meeting, I'm confused.
Right, well, the open meeting law is not just about like physically who's present at the meeting, I mean, you can have a serial meeting if three people talk outside about the same issue.
But I'm talking about this issue is in a posted meeting, so I'm, that's confusing to me, like, we have a meeting and it's posted, cuz we have a special, I mean, why would it be different?
Okay, I guess I'm saying, you're right, the issue is, it's the same issue, I'm just not saying it right. It'd be like, there's a trial in front of a judge and one judge hears the first half of the facts and then it, he leaves cuz he can't be there for the second half of the trial, and the second judge hears the second half of the facts. And then a decision is made by that second judge, one could say the process was unfair because the decision maker didn't hear the whole process. I mean, if that was a criminal trial, that obviously wouldn't fly. I guess it's, it's certainly a unique idea, I mean, it would be like reinventing the wheel, I think, a little bit, I I think if you've got two members of council that are on a committee, that would be what I would do, I mean, if you really want me to research and give a formal opinion, I can, but I.
I, you know, I think that special meeting thing is probably the best way to go.
Well, there is, uh, our public hearing scheduled for the July P and Z meeting, I mean, there's two public hearings, so. I would either you talk to Paul at the meeting or before the meeting.
I could get, we'll get together with him in the next week or so.
Yeah, I also think one comment I had, I, just looking at this issue was, you gotta kind of plan ahead, I mean, sixty days goes by quick, goes by really quick, and in fact, in many cities, they're extending the sixty days on almost every application. I mean, to even get it done in a hundred and twenty days takes diligence by city staff when you don't have a lot of staff, so. I think what happened here was they didn't have a quorum, but they said, well, look, we've got this next meeting and that's a hundred and seventeen days after the application, and I look at that the opposite way. I look at that and say, oh my God, you're gonna wait till three days before the deadline is, you know, or what, it wasn't, that's not true, it was like a hundred nine days, you know, or whatever it was, but it was close, I mean, once you're pushing that deadline, there's not a lot of room for error, something goes wrong.
It's June twenty fourth, so.
Anything could go wrong, and so I don't, you know, and then you've gotta notice a special meeting, you have time for that, so.
Just for the council's awareness, I know today is very clear when they do, when an application does come in about the timeline of it being published and getting to the P and Z, so it's a
Yeah.
Earlier in the month, the better.
Yeah, but kids have to be reasonable too, I mean, they have to understand that this is a small city with not a big staff, it's gonna take time, you know, it's gonna take time to get things organized and to put, fill a staff report or look at it, it's detailed, I mean, to make that, to gather the facts and just for him to produce that, it's gonna take
Okay.
effort, you know.
Would you two with mind to talk to Joe or to Paul before the meeting, just to have, share our comments with him and he can respond. All right. Good discussion, water and sewer. Joe, you wanna kinda go through the first two items real quick?
Yeah, just a quick update, wastewater treatment.
Yeah, just a quick update wastewater treatment facility, uh, construction continues, obviously, there is a brief update with pictures in the packet. Hopefully, we had a chance to look at that, uh, stop, continues to make progress. Over the last few weeks, uh, they continue to work on the S B R, uh, in terms of tying steel and pouring concrete. Uh, walls are starting to come up out of the ground, uh, the F L L lift station. Starting to come up out of the ground, uh, starting work on the tertiary building, and then continuing site work. Would be throughout the site. The storage tank, tanks did get completed. And, uh. So, a lot of continuous activity, we kinda got hit with some pretty big rains last week, that set people back a little bit, but. Catching up and continue to make good progress, so that's, that's a good sign. On the contracts two and three, sanitary sewer and water improvements, um. Uh, the pace is a little bit slower. The contractor is making progress, they do have. Or they have had two utility crews working in town, um, one south of. Lift station one, uh, so they're working in that Timberline Drive to Second Street. Area, uh, so the the gravity sewer and the trucks or the force main are in from the lift station to almost Second Street, and so. Uh, it looks like they're. Kind of doubling back and doing some restoration, cuz there's quite a bit of flow that goes through that that valley, and then. Continue out to Second Street itself, uh, First Street, uh, they continue to work in that first segment between. That western cul-de-sac and Ninth Avenue, um, contract is getting pretty close to done there, uh, the gas company was in this week. And, uh, did relocate that gas main that was in the way of the water main, and so they've got another two hundred and fifty feet of water main, and I think six. Sewer and water services in that area, and then they'll be complete with utilities, and so then they'll double back. Uh, and start street reconstruction, um, coincidentally, they did bring in a third crew today. Uh, to help over on First Street, which is frankly needed. But, uh, we'll, we'll start to see that street come back together next week, and then they'll jump to the next part. Um, Ellingson. Uh, drainage is also in town working on the project, uh, they're directional drilling. Uh, they have installed the water main, you know. Underneath fifty-two, underneath the river, and then along Fifth Street Northwest. Uh, they are nearly complete with the water main along Fifth Fifth Street Northwest in terms of the directional drilling work. Uh, and so the next piece that they'll tackle is, uh, directional drilling that water main, um, from Fifth Street. Uh, through the shore and old parts, to the south where we tied to, tied to existing, so they're really making pretty good progress. Um, and so that's good to see, um, so lots of activity, uh, we're expecting to see. The contractor ramped up a little bit more with longer days and a third crew that should help them. Um, there's also some, uh. Restoration of plantings that are kind of ongoing in the background, uh, that river restoration piece, the seeding did get done there. Um, at least most of the seeding got done there, and we're expecting a contractor into install the tree plantings. They were supposed to be here this week, so we'll see if that materializes or not. So, again, lots going on, we do have a coordination meeting with the contractor here. Um, on Thursday morning at ten, and either council one and a ten. Um, you're certainly welcome to, but we're just gonna kind of talk about, you know, where we're going and. Where, what what they're focusing on and what they're going to be focusing on and talking about. The importance of maintaining a schedule and providing us that information. Um, meeting the completion date, so, um, we'll have that discussion, I think Kane's gonna be there. Um, and I, I'll certainly be there with my staff, and so. That's the update, any questions from the council on any of that, a lot of information, we'll have a, um. Okay, we'll go out here this coming Friday.
Joe, one thing I'll bring up, and you may have gotten called about it. I've been contacted by residents on the west side. About the the streets not being watered and and graded, and I, and I will tell you on West Center Street. We're starting to see the big chunks again, I don't know where they came from, but. But last week. Um, yeah, late last week, it seems like they were right back in the wheel track. So.
Okay, I hadn't heard that, but.
Yeah.
Something that we'll have to pay more more attention to, I think, one of the issues that. They had is when the reclaimer went through, they didn't pull the mailboxes first, and so they, every time they kind of went out and around the mailboxes, and so now the blade goes by. And the blade just goes straight, and I think they're pulling some of those chunks in.
Yeah.
That's where some of that problem is coming from.
Okay.
Um, doesn't make it right, but that, that's the problem, is it's a contractor's responsibility to solve that issue, so. Between blading and being diligent about looking for those. You know, chunks of batuminous and watering the street, you know, we'll continue to talk.
And then in the watering, you know, that's, that is, I I will say that is definitely a big deal, and I think there was an email about that as well. With with the watering, watering it down because. So.
As a contractor trying to water at least once a week.
Yeah, I know they're watering at least once a week, and it really kind of depends on the week, right, I mean, some weeks it's. It's an issue, right now, it's a mess.
Just getting into a routine of the, every Monday morning would be great, so.
Yeah, but it's so wet weather dependent that even every Monday morning doesn't work, you know, because. So, it's it's kind of monitoring it, I think, and be cognizant of that, and.
So, okay, thanks, Joe, and the last item, water and sewer was a, uh. Point is, I didn't provide, but we've seen this before, uh. The P F A provided us, uh. Request to identify the P F A sourcing. Uh, through the Clean, uh, Water Legacy Act, and also identifying the the contractor, so we put together a sign. And so we got a quote through your packet, and the water service committee, uh, reviewed the packet, and, uh. Their recommendation was to order one sign, uh, the quote was for three. Uh, we were thinking the treatment plant, west side downtown, but we think the downtown is probably the most appropriate place for one sign. And, uh, that's six hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. Think about putting it somewhere up in the corner here with the community center sign, so.
And it's a requirement, we have to have one time, so.
So I make a motion that we approve purchasing this, uh. Point source implementation grant or P F A sign from Chad Tracy for six hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. Seconds in. Any other comments, discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, so you can probably say hi. Streets and roads. Uh, we have a yearly maintenance agreement with the county, through your packet. Live first, twenty twenty-two through June thirty, twenty twenty-three for the different grades. Should we request any assistance from the county? I don't see ever have, but if we need.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Um, and then I, I see the amount, what we're trying to do with them, um. How does this compare to last year?
Um, I don't know, I'd have to look at the old agreement. I'm guessing they're. Compared to some of the hours, and maybe Kane can comment, they're probably very similar to what, uh, we use a lot of excavating. For their alley rig for a mortar grader. Industry standard probably for around here. But again, I haven't seen the other contract, but maybe it didn't even increase, I don't know. Make a motion that we approve the, uh, Holset County Maintenance Agreement.
Okay.
Any other comments? Favor, signify we're saying hi.
Hi.
Parks and Trails. We had Stan Tech and Joe put together, uh. Ongoing, but we did go and get quotes, and Joe, you wanna speak to it?
Yeah, so we put together a construction plan specification and sent them out, uh, for quotes to local contractors. Um, we opened quotes last Thursday, uh, we did receive four quotes, uh, the low quote was from Schumacher Excavating in the amount of. Uh, fifty-six thousand two. Eighty-six, eighty-five, eighty-five, um. Uh, and they were low quoted by about a thousand dollars underneath the second hole there, which was, um. Fitzgerald Excavating, uh, in fact, uh, even the first three bidders were all pretty closely grouped, um, and so. I should have mentioned that that, everybody knows where that trail section is, it's, um, serving River Park, so it goes from. Riverwood Hills Park, uh, and it goes from Isis Lane, uh. To the east into the park, and so it's a mode trail now, um. It does kind of split through between two homes, and then along the back of the homes, and then it enters the larger park parcel. Uh, and ties in with the existing gravel trail network, and so be a nice improvement and a and a good safe way for folks to get to the park. It's an eight foot batuminous paved trail, uh, that's what the council had wanted there, and it largely follows the mode trail that exists here. And again, the low quote was from Schumacher, um, looking at the quotes, the one thing that kind of stands out is the batuminous price. You know. A year ago, we had been looking at batuminous prices, you know, in that eighty to a hundred dollars a ton range. Um, this one, we're at about a hundred and forty-five dollars a ton, you know, and. Talking to the contractors, it all comes back to that oil price and the price of diesel fuel, so there's obviously asphalt, is an oil distillate. And, uh. Lot of trucking, lot of costs, and and that's pushing those costs higher, so, you know, we're probably. Ten fifteen thousand dollars higher than I would like to see us, what we would have maybe been last year this time, um. But we're still within, you know, maybe a reasonable range, and I don't know that anybody would care to claim that. Oil prices are gonna go down anytime soon, so if the council wants to do it, um, we'd recommend that you work to the low bidder. Uh, Schumacher obviously does work for the city, they're doing the work, um, some of the work at the wastewater treatment plant, I, no doubt, they. Perfectly capable of doing this work.
What was the budget that we had for that last year, when you said that was in the budget?
Uh, for this year, we.
For this year.
We budgeted fifty-five thousand dollars, um, for the project. In our capital investment fund, we identified, and our capital outlay for parks and trails, we had fifty-five thousand for the path. We had, um. Twenty thousand for a possible gazebo at Riverwood Hills, and seven thousand for new picnic tables or more tables. So, within that capital outlay for parks, we had a ninety-two thousand, so. I think from a funding standpoint, it could be, but, you know, if we don't do the gazebo, we really haven't talked about these in the Parks Committee either, but. I think that we have funds to cover this, because part of the fifty-five thousand's already been used for his engineering. So, the fifty-six thousand is, so.
How much do you have for your engineering that's?
We're doing the engineering work on an hourly basis, the estimate is about ten to twelve thousand dollars, so.
So we're.
Really fifty-six plus that, you know, eleven thousand dollars or whatever is is the estimated total project cost.
I guess my question would be is. Given oil prices and everything right now. Is this something that we would wanna push out? Till next year? Hoping that it, that it goes down, or. Ryland, are you suggesting that we we cut? I mean, because if we add engineering costs, we are.
We're way over.
Quite a ways over, do we not do the gazebo this year? What's your, or what's everyone's thoughts on that?
I remember, yeah, I remember having a discussion about the gazebo and lumber being what it was to not do that. I don't know if it was voted on, it was definitely discussed, both, I think, at parks and here, um.
Oh, yeah, I think it's, um.
I think.
That's true what she says, I think that we, we started to look at it, the Parks Committee, but it was, I think, probably more than twenty thousand, so I think we decided to wait for it, so. The pathway, we've been talking about this for five, six years or more.
What if we narrowed the pathway from eight, what if we narrowed the pathway from eight feet to six feet?
Um, we've narrowed the pathway from ten feet to eight feet, uh, the standard minimum is eight feet.
S B S wanted to, the equipment that can put it down.
Yeah, we'd also run into problems with, that's kind of the minimum paper width too. That the this, this screen can condense down to.
Is that how wide the trails are, like the.
Yeah.
So I guess the only other option would be to put gravel down there instead of paving it and go that direction and and see what happens. That land next to it's for sale. And so I don't know what's gonna be going on with that one, when that ends up being developed or whatever happens.
Well, that won't matter because the park land is ours.
If it goes right next to that, as it cuts back into the park. If you look at the map. Part of that runs parallel to that land, that's probably sold.
Right, but how would that affect the parkland, all of our, like, my homes is on a park road.
Well, I just thought that it might be that whoever develops that might be able to chip into that. To have that part of a trail being put in, is what my thoughts were.
Well, the issue of waiting, I guess, I, you know, if you would have this a year ago, it would have been cheaper too.
Right, I know, and that's the gamble, like, waiting doesn't necessarily.
No, I'm just, just asking the question, you know.
Waiting doesn't necessarily equal. Cheaper prices either.
And, you know, we, we have other paid parks in the city, and I think it's just. We'd like to improve our amenities for everybody, so I think this is all part of that process of. Doing the first leg, or that's not interrupted, but the sewer system and that park area, and so that's why we're originally was to look at it this year, so.
So, Ryland, you said we have ninety-two thousand budgeted for all the parks in the capital.
In the parks.
In capital improvements, in that fund, how much have we used so far?
That's a good question, I don't, I'm not sure what is used, other than his, like, the only thing we've used, that Parks Fund is for his engineering, which was. Sixty-five hundred, maybe not that much.
Yeah, probably not, you haven't seen that much yet.
I'm just thinking of what are we not going to be able to do if we do this, that that's my.
What else, we've done the playground, but that was, that was even this year's budget, was it?
That was last year's.
Right. Um. Can you think of what else, I mean.
I think we would just, uh, forego the picnic tables and garbage can and the gazebo, or we would condense and do. One or the other, or.
Right, like somewhere ta- tables or benches and the path, but not the gazebo for now.
Did we say, was was the gazebo approved, were we planning on this year?
It was, yes, we were planning on it, but we had a discussion to say, eh, now is not the best time.
As I, I was.
But it was in the budget.
So.
Did we?
But the money is still there.
The funds is there, we dedicate a hundred thousand to the C I P, we spent thirty-three thousand, no, yes, for pickup. Out of the capital budget, so we, since we have sixty-nine, no. Sixty-seven thousand left in the capital budget, if we wanna stay within our hundred thousand. We always think, we can always go over if we want to, if we don't have to or need to. So that's why we, the pickup and the pathway would keep us under a hundred thousand that was budgeted in our tax levy.
Yeah.
Be able to do the gaze- gazebo or the tables or. Right.
And, I think.
And somewhat, but not like we don't like.
And I think that the Parks Committee just speak, is is gonna come to the July meeting, uh, with some requests for more. Bunches for next year's budget, benches and tables, so maybe we could put that off until next year and and get that path paved for now. And we just probably have to do a step by step process.
I make a motion that we approve the quote from. Schumacher Excavating for fifty-six thousand two. Schumacher Excavating for fifty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars to pave the Riverwood Hills pathway.
A second.
Second. Any other discussion or comments? And the schedule request is by one October?
Uh, that's all about right, yeah, maybe for the.
Any other comments? See none, or those in favor? Everybody saying aye? That's approved. Second item on parks and trails, we moved this a little bit earlier about opening the bathrooms. For large group rentals, a local park shelter. We have. I think it's something we should consider doing and we talked about, and this is for large groups, so I hope we need to set it. A person live right now, they're closed. They have one porta potty there. I went down there with the Lions Club and. Didn't know how many people they were expecting, but I, when I found the men's room was unlocked. So then I went over, unlocked the women's bathroom too for that afternoon, then I went back that early that evening and closed it up because they. Or the group that was coming there. So in the process, talking with the. John Marks, they've reserved it for this coming fall for a wedding reception for a hundred and fifty people. And so that. Made me think that the reason I put on the agenda was to consider. Including the bathrooms, opening them up and closing them just for their rental period.
I think for reservations and who cares how, who cares the amount of people, but if someone took the time to reserve and pay for the park. I think then we open the bathrooms. That's how I would think.
Especially if they've reserved it some time ago. I think the assumption is that we're going to have access to the facilities.
And like the Lions Club was thinking about. Themselves bringing a porta potty in just to make sure there was two of them instead of just one.
Oh, for that last event?
Just for the Lions Park event, Lions Club event, but they, they was too late to do that and. Repeated to have them do that, so.
Did they, and did they rent, they've had a rental agreement? Yeah, I just think that's part of the service of that.
Right.
That park in particular, because there is a bathroom there, I think we should.
One thing to consider is, we can, it's a large group. If we open the bathrooms up, if we want to set a fee for them. Help offset the cleaning. Because it would have to be cleaned up for.
I mean, maybe as an option on the form for that particular park.
Right now, the bathrooms, electricity and water is not part of the rental. Or the rental agreement, it's just kind of an understood or assumed.
Like, what am I paying, why am I filling this form out if I'm not getting electricity in a bathroom?
Yeah, and do we?
You're right, the water turned off, electricity turned off, and that's what was let out.
And how much is the rental fee?
Thirty bucks.
So it's already thirty dollars to rent it?
I've always been curious about this process anyway, because at, at what other, do, do people rent the other parks?
No, that's the only one we have a facility to rent.
Right. So I think personally, the rental agreement as is, how much is it?
Thirty bucks. For all day.
I think personally, the rental agreement should include the amenities that are located at that park. Because otherwise, like you said, what's the, what are we renting it? It's just grass.
To do that, we have to put a meter, what you're thinking, electric meter on that or?
What? No, that's just, the thirty dollars would take care of that.
All the lights and.
Right, and the cleaning, because. I mean, that does already cover it technically, if you think about it. It's not a.
So you want to be, and it's kind of reserved, it's not a free-for-all. If a group showing up and says, no, I want to use it, it says, no, I got a reservation. Okay, well, I'll go someplace else.
Well, and do we post, like, we should.
They post on the side.
Perfect.
Put a piece of paper up there.
Yeah, yeah.
So one question I would have, and Kane, maybe you can answer this. For cleaning? Does that thirty dollars cover our cleaning expense? So if we say, okay, we're going to open it, and personally, I think they should be open, but does it cover our expense in it?
Not the bathrooms how they used to be when they were open in a free-for-all, just when there's an event.
Yeah, you're going to have at least an hour's time down there, at least.
For one person.
Yeah, I'd say two, I'd say two would be safe, two hours, so thirty dollars doesn't cover it, so.
Fifty would be closer.
Sure.
So what'd you say around six and fifty?
Fifty would be closer.
Yeah, so I, I would, I would propose that, that we raise that. And then just, that's in the contract, that if they reserve it, that's included, but just raise that reservation fee. Because then we can cover our costs and they can assume that they're going to get that. But I think we need to put it in the form too. If, if they're going to get it, we, I think we need to be very explicit as to what they're paying for, you know, what they're getting.
Can we, we do that? We set our fee schedule already for the year. Do we just do that for next year then?
It's out there on the website.
Right.
So.
How many rentals do we have this summer?
We can talk about this more at the budget time too, raising it. How do we provide, modify the form? We also need to talk about how the key is going to be handled, just like we give the key out for the building for rentals on the weekend. We can give a key out to unlock the restrooms, otherwise you'd have to have public works, open it up, close it. Don't want the mayor doing it because he makes too much money already, so we don't want to.
And honestly, what we could do is that, I think we would take a deposit on the key. You'd want a, like, a twenty-five dollar deposit.
So we do our budget, let's circle around to these comments. And move on on our agenda. Good discussion. Public Works. You know, before we leave that subject, we need to make sure we understand what we're going to do.
But I, can I just make a motion that we open the bathrooms, electricity, water. Unlock the doors for any rentals of Orinoco Park from now until. The, the rest of the.
Oh, were you done, Lori? I'm sorry.
Yes, I can. Make sure I have it clear.
Okay.
Oh, wait, amend. And I would like to update the language on the contract to reflect. That it is included in the rental fee.
Let's have decide rental fee deposit, key deposit. If we give them a key, are we going to modify the form?
I think we, I, I would prefer to modify everything next year at that, when we modify the. The costs and we modify the language and we modify the deposit. And this year.
I think there's maybe three or four right now.
We just can contact those people if it's, or, or we, or they'll contact us, I don't know.
So we want to go back to your motion this year.
My, my motion is still, still stating that I would like to update the contract with the language that states that for their thirty dollars. It includes the electricity, water. Restroom is open.
Nothing about the key. We get my key.
Is that what we're doing today, is giving a key out? I don't think we, I don't think I have enough understanding on this.
So the only reason we need, it's a Saturday or Sunday, we have to have public works come on site and unlock it. Then come back later and lock it. So there, it's, pay them to do that. Which is could be your comp time or it can be overtime. Or we have a key that we give to the person, they can pick it up a day on Friday morning, whatever, before the weekend. Give us a deposit for the key, and when they come back, they can open it up, lock it when they're done. And then when they bring the key back on Monday, they get their deposit back.
Is it possible, though, that there are people that aren't from here that rent the park? I know there used to be a grouping group. That wouldn't be able to just come in on Monday and hand in the key.
They could put it in the drop box and then we could just.
Or, yeah, show that, yeah.
I feel like.
I think we could really.
I feel like we need to have two separate motions. I feel like we need to have the motion. That I'm making for the contract in the bathrooms and then close that out and then talk about the key.
And that's what you seconded.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, I second Lori's motion. So now we need the motion on the key.
So all those in favor of modifying the contract to reflect what the thirty dollar includes. Signify by saying aye. Those same sign, it's approved now. We'll make a second motion.
Well, I think if we're discussing the key and how this is going to, I, I think we need public works input, now we need office staff input. Number one. Is it just a deposit for the key or is it a deposit for the. Overall. Condition of the facility. So I think that's the other end. If we're giving them access, unlimited access, twenty-four, seven access to this facility. What's the deposit? Like, I, I feel like that's more than a twenty-five dollar key. I feel like that's a five hundred dollar key that we expect this space to be exactly like it was when you found it.
What do we do for the building here?
Hundred and fifty dollar deposit.
But you haven't asked for a deposit for them. When they reserved it for thirty bucks, right?
Yeah, that's what they're going, yeah.
This would be after, you know, that you could reserve it on a. Monday afternoon and we wouldn't need to give a key because public works is already on site and they can just go open it and close it and. So this would be like the after-hours type reservation where you're, you're asking for this, but we don't have staff available to go and open and close this building.
Kane, would you come to the audio, please?
I guess I want to know how you would for, to do this for the rest of the year.
Uh, like Renee said, there's only a couple, so I think we can work through it between Renee and I and current staff. I don't think we need to get too into the weeds on how we do it. I think we'll just handle it as it comes.
And then next year?
Next year, we'll have a plan. You guys can decide some more details there, but I think we can work with each other and get it done.
So no need to worry about this key business?
I don't think so.
Because next year, you know, it could even be a lockbox or something, or a keypad or.
There's options.
Right.
And I think we can, we can figure that out and see how that works best for us.
Thanks, Kane.
So what's our, what's our motion?
No need a motion.
We don't, it's just a, a process thing, right?
All right, very good. Works adding, replace your fuel cards with a Shell universal. That's in your packet. Some additional fees. Twelve dollars a month. Kane, no more comment, but the. The proposal is from staff is to have three for the fire department and three for the public works.
Yeah, that would give us an option to use the Shell gas station. And we can keep the current quick trip cards and use them both as needed. Unless, unless we decide we want to get rid of the quick trip ones and I think, I think the city staff can make that decision.
I think fleet cards are a good add to the public works anyway, just a matter of working with what's the best way to handle it.
Make motion to approve the gas cards.
Second that?
Did you second?
Yes, I did. Any other comments? All those in favor, so if you're saying aye? Oh, it's. Same sign, that's approved. Quick update on the gold rush. We're still very much planning on having a gold rush between Minnesota Avenue, the west side of Minnesota Avenue, from the west center street to Fourth Street. Our show will be in the park on Saturday afternoon from two to five. They will line up at the gas and go and proceed to have a parade down Minnesota Avenue to Fifth Street and into the park. And we're, I think we're allowing a hundred cars as our cutoff point, so. Couple people in the committee are working on trophies and they're taking that over, so I think that's a good source to. The contracts are coming in. In fact, they're coming in better than they did in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty-one, just from a dollar number. That's great. I'm glad to see that enthusiasm, so. This year, we're doing something a little bit different with the logistics spreadsheet, kind of spreading out the responsibilities and. And we're working on that. And so it gives everybody a chance to see what's happening with the different areas and. Sent out the, the June meeting minutes this afternoon, along with an update on the spreadsheet. And the people can see what's still open, what's been closed, what discussion we've had on each of the items, so a little more transparency to everybody. All right, is any other questions? Otherwise. My side is personnel. We have a Tyler Tech training for administrative staff. This is. Packet, there's an explanation from staff about getting some formal training. The formal training is fifteen hundred dollar quote. And a question comes up, I think we're getting, we're getting by, I guess that's a very way to say it, but. We have also the option of just waiting till we get a permanent position filled in the city staff too. Something to act on now or. The city staff. Personnel committee.
I'm going to lean on you, Renee. I think that this is something that you and I have been, Jen have talked about. There's a lot of. Pieces of the Tyler Tech program that Renee hasn't been trained on, and I think this would allow her to kind of dive into what the capabilities are. To help her function more easily and efficiently within her role.
But then we also have the question of. If we are looking for a permanent person and they come on in a couple of months, do we maybe wait and do the training altogether? They are really good about helping us whenever we call in and do stuff, so they are piecing things together. But any formal training that would have been done with these programs would have been done when we first got the system and obviously nobody that. Is here now worth working at that time. So we have bits and pieces of training, but not an actual full training. They did say if we didn't use like the four hours in one, we could take some of that time and put it at the other. Or if we didn't need that much, because I had been learning a lot along the way, it might not even be fifteen hundred, but that was what they said would be a good starting point.
And this is, they come, is it online training or they come in?
They remote in and show you where to go.
Nice, so it is, it is interactive, okay.
Yep, yep. And then they have some webinars too, to go back and refresh yourself on.
So Renee, is this a. It's fifteen hundred, is that fifteen hundred? It's too small for me to read. Is it fifteen hundred per person?
No, no, just total. So we can have. So we can have three or four of us. Yeah, we could have three or four. No, that's for all sections. It breaks it down to like I don't remember how many hours, like utility building, I think they put four payroll, I think they put four and then cash receivables is maybe two. So it's how many hours they thought it would take to get us up to speed.
Okay, so you could have a two-hour session and then three weeks later have another two-hour session, cause I guess where I'm going with this is, you know, what is it that you want training on right now that will help you get to where you need to be? And then when we bring on the new staff, can we use it for the new staff? Or the things that are determined that they're going to do, so.
Yeah, they said we can break it down however we wanted to. That was just a proposal as to a starting point.
I think we need training.
Right, it would be nice to use that way. And do you feel like I guess if you did have training and and a new, as as new staff come on board, would you I don't know if you can answer this now, not having the training yet, but then, I mean, hopefully the goal would be then you would also be able to help train them. You have learned, you know, so that we wouldn't have to reinvest and start all over again.
Correct. That would be the goal if we did it now. Otherwise, if the goal is to hopefully have somebody in a few months. Maybe we just wait. I don't know.
What do you, what do you feel, how, what, do you feel like though, something, are there's things that you would need help with right now that you feel you need help with right now to get you through those few months?
Every now and then, but like I said, I just reach out to them and they've been helpful to get on. But it's just, you know, we work on this and then we work on that, and then we work on this. We don't have like a set plan, like they would go through step by step. These processes. And that's, I think, what we're missing. But like I said, I don't know if now is the right time or if we wait a few months. If we're, if it's gonna be four to six months before we get somebody, it might be good to have the training now. But if it's gonna be two to four months before we get somebody on, then I would say maybe we just wait and I piece together what I can at the moment. I don't know.
I would also comment too, I think that um it's good that you researched and got this information in front of us. But at the same time, I think we should um as our interim administrator continues to review our processes and and software packages, that uh, there might be some suggestions for us to look at alternative besides Tyler two. In my brief conversation with with the, with Sunny, it sounds like this is kind of a one-off based on her experience and we may wanna throw that possibility out of looking at another software company. Might be cheaper, might be more expensive too, I don't know. But we, I think we should leave that option open. Good, we'll wait then and just kind of see how it goes. National Night Out.
Under personnel, we also did have just a couple of updates from the personnel meeting that we that we held. So one of the topics that we needed to bring up is we have a seasonal employee that is a second year coming back to the city. And somehow, I I don't know if it was I feel like we talked about it in the meeting where we brought on um, the two high school or approved the two high school kids to come on. But his pay never got bumped up to match the two new people. And so we're hoping that we can, you know, kind of discuss with council to make sure that
Cause the new people are coming in a dollar higher than existing person.
And I think when we talked about it, I think when we talked about with Kane, um, when he came to the podium a few months ago and we talked about bringing on the two high school kids, we also talked about making sure that this person that was coming back would be at the same A level. But I don't know that it was noted anywhere and we voted on those two coming in or approving those two positions, so I just, I don't know if we need to motion. I don't know the legality of bringing it pay um, you know, into the conversation, so, but.
So your consideration is to make them all the same level?
Yes, yes.
Just be our seasonal.
But maybe we didn't make that motion.
I I don't remember hearing that, okay? If that was it, I know we talked about the rates when you were talking about that, but I didn't know about this other person, so. I'm all in favor of making sure his rate is where the rest of people should be.
I was saying something about scale, like the pay, you know, that I definitely remember, it just didn't get done.
During the conversation about them coming back.
Did you come, what do you? Repeat, um, second year of the first person, he provides, he's providing some leadership to the other two.
No, not really. No, they they all kind of share the same duties. Ideally, uh, the second year employee, you know, it'd be nice to offer them a little incentive to come back or I know I didn't bring this up earlier, but a year's worth of experience is something and uh maybe next year when our our other two employees come back, maybe that's an incentive, you know, a, a minimal raise or a I I don't know if you guys would be up for that, but uh, I think at minimum, making all of our seasonal employees the same wage is a good starting point.
Yeah, I agree.
And and for, can we prorate that? We need to, and prorate that so that he is.
And he's only been on staff for a couple of weeks now, so we're talking fifty, sixty hours.
So the two that we hired now are sixteen dollars an hour. And the second year person is fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay. So so I did, I just assumed they were all seasonal people were sixteen, but that's not the way it worked out.
You know, I think it was brought up when we were, when I was requesting these employees, I think it was brought up uh initially fifteen was the rate that I proposed, and I think council kind of said, well, we could do sixteen or.
It just got missed, so we can, can I, I'll make a motion to pay our seasonal employees the same rate at sixteen dollars an hour and retro, make it retro for the seasonal employee that was receiving the wrong amount.
The second part of that, which is new that Kane brought up. Are we going to address that tonight or do we want to address that? Next year, well, this is an employee coming back. And I it's new, we didn't talk about it in the meeting, but I, I think it's it would be good to have a quick discussion on that. Cause it's a valid point, cause we, we would rather right?
Yeah.
If they're good.
You know, we we train them one year and then the next year it's just less training and just that better of an employee.
So what's your thoughts, Kane? What what are you kicking around in your head?
I'm not a financial guy, but I would say fifty cents. Not a ton of money. I mean, they're working thirty hours a week.
It's a little something.
It's a little something. I I don't know if that's enough. I don't know if it's, I don't know. I just maybe you guys table that and we talk about it next month.
So if I may make an amendment to your motion to increase for the second year seasonal person, we get sixteen fifty hour. And the first year would be sixteen dollars. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion as amended? Signify by saying aye. I oppose.
Thank you.
That's approved, so. And will that be retroactive?
The other thing we talked about, that's just policy change, right?
So we back, jump back to National Night Out. That's the one I added.
Yes.
So um, talking with Renee, National Night Out, maybe you talked to personnel of National Night Out, she'd still like to join. I reached out to a couple of people that would like to volunteer and help. And I'm waiting for a third person to respond to, so. I think that, of course, I can help as well, but I think those I have two names for sure and hopefully they'll confirm those tomorrow, but uh we're willing to help out and take, decide how we want to approach it. We have fifteen hundred dollars committed to that from donations, gold rush donations, so. It may not be what we had last year, but at the same time, I think the community appreciates that opportunity to get together, so. All right, um, Mr. Any other comments? August the second. Uh, last item is our, our second last is personnel policy update. Policy.
Um, no, we talked a little bit about it tonight, I think with Sunny um, on board now kind of going through. She's digging into it. Um, so, you know, I think this is just kind of an ongoing thing. I don't know that we need to continue to add it to the agenda unless we have updates for it. Yeah, and unless we have something to show, um.
We just, we just know we're going through it and we we did talk about it. And uh, we're going to lean on Sunny a little bit in terms of her experience and and what she's seen in other cities on some of these things and bring it to the here and now, right?
All right.
Oh, yes. Um, under that policy update, um, one of the things that we talked about during the personnel committee meeting tonight was the way that our payroll is set up currently. Um, our payroll runs through Sunday and Renee has until nine AM on Monday to get everything entered into the bank accounts um, for direct deposit throughout Tuesday, which is just not enough time. Um, and none of us have had enough time to actually look at what the policy states, if if it says you know, Tuesday is payday. Um, but what the city staff would like to do is push payday out until Friday. So it's just an extra few days to get payroll and time cards all up and running. Not pushing things to the limit as far as time when we have holidays like we did this week. It does not leave enough time to get everything entered appropriately.
And Kane brought up a a good use case for changing this. So on a, on a weekend, let's say one of the staff have to, have to do something over the weekend. They they have overtime or comp time or whatever it is. Monday is is D-Day, so they don't really have much time. They have to get that in and and if if we push it out, then they have time to get their, those things that happen on the weekend entered into the payroll, so.
So when you say Friday, because we've had this conversation a couple of years ago, when we did change it to Monday. And I thought the issue was for what you're just exactly said, so you're, the Monday you're talking about, you're talking about moving it out from Monday to a Friday or moving it back.
Pay periods don't change. The pay period will still be the same. It will still be the same Monday through Sunday. But instead of racing to get that paycheck out by Tuesday, we'll now have Friday.
So they have more days to process.
Yeah.
What happened, like on the weekends and what.
Ready to go, okay.
So at this point, I don't know if we need a policy change. Because I I didn't have time to look at it, to see if it's in the the personnel policy. Just to change the date from payday Tuesday to payday Friday, so. That's the ask. I think if if there is an issue or if it is in that personnel policy, we can bring it back next month and just make a motion.
Everybody was in your personnel committee meeting and was all yeses. I don't see an issue with it, so. Okay. Last item is the consent agenda.
I had a few questions on the consent agenda.
So you'd like to pull some things out or just discuss them?
I don't really know how the process is for this. Pulling stuff out, but that is what I'd like to do, I guess. Just, I wanted to make sure the Lions Club application for the liquor license doesn't seem to, it doesn't seem to be complete. The, and what we were given, if you like, compare it. Maybe a paper copy would be easier to.
Oh, mine is. I know they use two different forms, which might be why.
Okay, cause it's like the fire department one.
I think she used an old one and yes, and go use the new one and that might be why it looks a little bit different.
Yes, you mean fire department?
Or sorry.
I can't, my computer is like speeding through things.
One is also typed and one is handwritten, so some of it looks like it's
Cause there's no information here. See what I'm saying?
Share what you're looking at, questioning.
They're just looking at the actual applications.
It's just that one, they must. I just, I just wanted you to make sure that just so it didn't mess anything up for, you know what I mean, for having to come back to you or anything like that anyways. And the street repairs, can we discuss that for just a little, the street repairs?
Yes.
I was just hoping to just have a little bit of input on that. I know you people are on the street. You guys do that once a year.
Right, we did that. And if you want.
Good of the community to hear what we're doing.
Those street repairs, um, I think we got those prices more for our information. As Joe shared with it earlier, the price of blacktop and diesel fuel. My recommendation is to, is to not go ahead with the three manholes and to not go ahead with the Third Avenue repair. We patched it ourselves in-house. I hope we just wait and see if we can get through this year. And maybe next year it's less, maybe it's more, but I think we can get by. I think we can buy some time.
Okay.
So I think it, it was just good information for us to find out what we're dealing with. Uh, when you look at those prices for the manholes, uh, they are substantial. And then, and then that, uh, the Third Avenue uh, numbers there, I mean, that's just a a small little patch going across the road. It's, it's very, very small. Like I said, we got it patched. I think we'll wait and see how that holds up and we can always patch it again for a lot less than than what you see there, so.
Okay, so does that need to be pulled out entirely then? Because we don't want to vote on that.
I would say you should make a motion to remove it.
I'll make a motion to remove street repairs from the consent agenda.
So yeah, the it's about a two, three inch gap, but they did a nice job of filling it in and
I I think we can buy some time with that, definitely.
All in favor of moving the estimate from nurse services to be removed, signify by saying aye. It's approved.
And one last thing, um, August twenty-second for the blood drive. When I first thought that, I'm like, oh my God, that'll be a disaster. It's the day after Gold Rush.
Exactly.
But then I thought, what a great opportunity to promote the blood drive. So I don't know. I feel like it's a good discussion because we could have posters of it, you know, on our bathrooms and in the fire hall and, you know.
Now, the day after Gold Rush, we'll have sentenced to serve people here. They'll be cleaning up all the plastic.
All their inside.
They're inside, that's the main thing. We have some orange fence to. They're inside, that's the main thing, we have some orange fence to keep people from going upstairs, downstairs.
That's right. What do you, what are your thoughts on timing, like making sure they do that right away? And then still being able to host it, what are your thoughts Kane?
This is the first I've heard of it, uh, it's the month for Gold Rush.
Second, yeah.
I'd say push it off a week.
Okay.
I really would.
Do you think you can ask them to do that?
Yeah, that was just the date they gave me, so.
Okay.
There's a lot of things that happen for cleanup, there's a lot of work and depending on the weather and the turnout and.
True, sure, true.
Yeah.
And getting this room clean for reception.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd push it out, give us, give us a week to get the town back in order.
Okay. Okay.
And does it matter, are you guys okay if we just push back a week and get it on the books?
Yeah, I don't think we need to. I just think we can, we can still promote it, I think. During the event, you know, have signs and stuff, especially if we keep it close, I think it would be a great way to get more, more people. They do a turnout last time, I think we could do better.
Do we need to move, to make a motion to change the date? Or they were.
Well, they just not approve this August twenty second date, cause they may have conflicts with something other, I just think the twenty ninth.
Or can I make a motion, can I make a motion to have Renee or to. Schedule, reschedule with the blood drive?
I don't think there's anybody saying we don't want to do it, it's just a matter.
Right, that's what I mean, that we reschedule, but leave it up to her. Can I make a motion to do that or do I still need to remove it? From the consent.
Or we could just make a motion not to approve this and then let them come back with a new date, cause they have to work with their schedules too. May not be the twenty ninth, maybe September eighth, whatever.
If we have time to bring it back for July's meeting, I would suggest just moving it out of this one. Unless you're wanting that blood drive to occur prior to next.
Right, and that's not the issue, so, okay, I'll make a motion to remove the blood drive. From the consent agenda.
Sorry, your second, if you can pass for a second.
A second.
Okay.
Any comments? So you're not all in favor, so if I was thinking. August twenty second date offer consent.
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
Oh, same sign. The, the other comments?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'm ammending.
As amended.
As a second.
Any other comments? I think this consent agenda is really good. Embraced the consent. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Make a motion, we adjourn at eight oh five. Favorite signature of it, say aye.
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 Thank you, I can go to bed and get up at two AM.
I'm sorry, I told you that one and a half, didn't I?
I think you did say that.
I'm impressed.